I'd call to order the council meeting for Mayor and City Council of Tonny Town for the month of November and ask Councilman Vigliotti, Vegas, and to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present and accounted for. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the minutes for October 5th special meeting and the regular meeting with corrections and the October 11th regular meeting in closed session. Anyone care to make a motion to approve all or individual minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
There was one spelling correction I made to Clara prior to this meeting and she's aware of that.
Okay. I had one, Mr. Mayor. On the first, second, third, fourth paragraph, it says Mayor McCarron conducted a poll of council members to determine the word duly. I made a motion with second by Councilman Vigliotti and we voted on that, three in favor. And I make a motion to amend the minutes to... It's just that you had a discussion of it and then you took a vote on it because it was a motion second was action of the council to adopt the language duly. So I'd like to submit that as a...
Mayor, we have reviewed the video and it stands as it is. There was no... The Councilman Frazier did make a motion. It was not second and there was a poll.
That's what I remember it being.
We took a vote on it. We voted on it.
No, there was no vote.
No, the only motion we made for that meeting was when we actually adopted the resolution. We didn't make motions for the changes. We recommended changes and we informally discussed them and approved or denied them. And I believe that's how that went down. You said the video supports that?
Video supports... Video supports that Councilman Frazier did make a motion. There was no second and the council was polled.
Well, then can we make...
Perhaps we should reflect that.
Reflect that in the minutes then, that a motion was made.
Okay.
I thought I had a second. That's... I think we are supposed to discuss matters without a motion second.
Any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. It's approved, it's amended. I need to ask council if there's any conflict of interest on any of the agenda items tonight.
Yes, sir.
No, sir.
All right. I consensus we have a new. Under resolutions, ordinances, and agreements, our first item is to introduce ordinance 29, 2016, modification of election schedule. Anyone care to make a motion to introduce that ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So introduced. Next, we have the adoption of resolution 2016-30, the water allocation for November of 2016. Anyone care to make a motion to adopt the water allocation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next is resolution 2016-31, a notice of intent to enter into a national flood insurance program. Is there a motion to enter into the flood program?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, we have the city manager's report. Henry, do you have an update for us?
Nothing new to report.
Any questions for Henry? Any questions on the departmental reports? We'll move into the legal report. Jay, do you have anything for us?
Nothing new.
Anyone have any questions for Jay?
I do. I have a couple of questions. That's all right, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow is the special election and my understanding from talking to members of the Carroll County Board of Elections is that we're not using Carroll County machines. Is that true? We're using... Not using Carroll County voting machines because they were just used in the recent election.
That's correct.
That's right. So what machines are we using and where did we get them?
I'll have to pass the mic down to Clara.
From a company called Electech.
Okay. Is that... Where are they located, do you know?
I believe it's New Jersey.
Okay.
If you bear with me for a second, I can find some information.
Is there a paper ballot associated with this or is it all electronic?
It's electronic.
I'm not pleased with the... I'm very pleased that the county has gone away from all electronic systems and gone to a paper backup system so there's a physical record of what happens. I'm concerned about systems that are all electronic and I... Why did we choose that? Do you know why we chose that company?
It's what we used in the last election and they were very easy to work with. They're out of Mount Holly, New Jersey.
What... Is there a subcontractor? What do we pay those people?
I don't have their... I don't have their estimate... Oh, maybe I do have that. Again, if you just bear with me here, let me look through my information. If I don't have it here, I can get that information for you. I thought I had it with me.
Then the election in May, will we use voting machines? Maybe Attorney Gallow could speak to that. Will we use county voting machines for that? Because the county has adopted a system that's much more fail-safe and allows a recount.
We haven't in the past. We've used this company for the past election, this last election, this current election.
I remember I posed this question previously and was told that the county was hesitant to let municipalities borrow their machines, is what I was told.
It was, yeah. For this election, they said you could not use the machines until their election was certified.
Right.
So this was not happening at all. But we used... It wasn't a question posed to them because we used this in the past. So if you all want that to happen, then we can look into that, but...
I heard some complaints on Election Day that the readers didn't tell you how your vote was cast. People wanted... That came out on exit polling, wanted to see that it registered their votes because sometimes coloring a little block might not count. They were concerned electronic counter might not register their vote correctly or omit a vote. And so that's the comments I heard on Election Day just a week ago.
The estimate I got from them was $2,170. And that's for two voting machines and one which we are not charged for unless for some reason we have to use it.
I would just like to tell the council regarding the type of machines. I know they've noticed in the election last week, we had an all-electronic system a couple years ago. There were just a few machines because the machines are very complex and expensive. But when you had a system like we had last week, there were 20 to 30 machines which stopped the backup of people because there's not a lot of technology. When you go into the booth to vote, the technology is just in the reader. And so one of the wonderful things about going back to a paper ballot is that you get the ability to verify the vote if someone requests a recount or there's any question about it. But also that we can have an increased number of voting machines in order that we don't have long lines in the precincts. So if we discuss this at a future meeting, I'd like you all to consider adopting a system that provides those safeguards.
noted.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I do. Make sure you note that $2,000 bill along the rest of the stuff that this has cost us. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's move into the monthly financial report. Anyone have any... Care to make a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, we have the accounts payable. Anyone care to make a motion to approve the accounts payable?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I brought up on Wednesday my concern about reimbursement for some council members regarding expenses paid. I... We discussed that, I think, and it's in the video that we did so. There's an amount of $460.05 on check number 20209694 for Diane Foster and it says HSB Board, Community Breakfast, FSK Board, MML Retreat. And I think there was some explanation that it was cumulative of a couple of months worth of boards. To what extent can we get reimbursement for things not directly related to city government?
That's correct.
To what extent? He's asking in what way can... In what circumstances can he be reimbursed?
Anytime you are working or representing the city in an official function, you can be reimbursed for any expenses that you occur.
Can I step in just a second?
So this is saying that when you serve on the... When you serve on the H... What is HSB Board?
Human Services Program of Carroll County.
Human Services Program, that you're in a municipality seat when you do that?
Yes.
There's a one seat for municipality, is that...
Yes.
And you serve in that seat?
Yes.
Also, I was concerned about the $14,387...
Before we go off that topic there, one of the things, Councilman Frazier, did you get an employee handbook?
Yeah, you all gave that to me after a while.
All of this is covered in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm concerned about that level of reimbursement. It's the first time I've seen a number that large since I've been on the council.
Did it was not... Excuse me a minute. Was not... That not explained last Wednesday? You didn't understand the explanation last Wednesday when you brought that up?
No, I just wanted to ask some clarification on... Because I didn't get an explanation of what boards these were. I know that some people serve on a lot of different boards of directors and I don't think all are germane to working for the city. And I just wanted clarification on that and I got some more information on it and I thank you for that. The second thing that I wanted to bring up before we act on the accounts payable is the $14,000 invoice for legal services. It's a $6,000 check, $6,181.25. And then there's a second number, $8,2625. I... If I'm not mistaken, the city manager was hired for $75,000 in the original proposal to hire the city manager and my research in the budget shows that he's making $91,000. I went back since he did some...
You're wrong.
What is the compensation then? That's what I calculated.
When I was hired, I was hired at $86,000.
$86,000. All right. Okay. I'm concerned about this level of legal bills because if you go back, they were in November now and I've gone back through my packets and added up the total amount and it almost equals your salary in legal fees. And so I'm concerned about that. If we... I think that if one town manager is expensive enough, but I don't see why we need two.
But it's not two. That's an attorney. He's not a manager.
Well, it comes to meetings and also a lot of board meetings and things like that. I just question that.
You know, Councilman Frazier, the time to bring things like this up is during our budget planning session. And if you have changes in structure and staff, that's a good time to talk about them.
I think I brought... I talked about this in the budget planning sessions, but this is right before me today and that's why I brought it up.
It was explained to you last week.
Another suggestion I make, I might make, Councilman, if you have questions on specific questions, you know, detailed questions, not just what was this for, but detailed questions that you plan to come in either before or after the council meeting and get a thorough explanation of your question.
Well, I just think that's excessive.
Because it's impossible to recall the detail that you're asking for without the documents in front of us.
Sure.
So it's not fair to try to put your clerk on the spot or your city manager on the spot or your attorney on the spot.
I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, just to ask for clarity and express my opinion that the...
Well, again, I...
I'm concerned about that level of expenditure.
I encourage you to challenge any expense you feel is unfair, but I'm telling you, the way to do that is to become educated about what that expense is and then maybe you wouldn't have to challenge it. Then maybe you wouldn't have to tie up council time talking about something that can't be answered in a public session.
Well, it's quarter of eight and this is the last item on the agenda. I don't think I'm using too much time. I got the answer that I was looking for.
Well, again, I'd love to find all the information that you are requesting, but it's not information we can require... We can provide off the cuff. We have to go into detail about that. And again, if you're concerned about administrative expenses, the time to talk about administrative expenses is when you were planning the budget last fall or last winter.
I think I did talk about them then, but I'm talking about them now because another $14,000 came out of the checking account.
But you approved those expenses when you approved the budget.
No, I voted against the budget. I'm the only person to vote against the budget.
Marilyn, can I say something briefly here?
Sure.
The money that Diane has incurred is an expense that Mayor Pro Tem Foster has incurred is because she goes out and she represents the city. She helps attract businesses. She helps attract groups and organizations, places like the Silver Oak Academy to work with is to do different things, right?
I didn't get to vote on that.
She moves around and she does a lot for this town. And then Jay, with all the... The council with all of the legal expenses that, you know, we have to pay him, we incur them.
Yeah, but aren't you troubled by two figures that large from the cumulative annual amounts for managerial people?
He's doing the work to do them, number one. And second of all, he charges us a rate that is far lower than anything else you're going to find in this area.
The cumulative amount of administrative...
Which would be larger if he charged more.
Are stunning.
He's been doing a lot of work for us lately, Councilman. A lot of work.
Which was explained to you last meeting. You ever listen?
Why did you say that?
It's true. Explained at last meeting.
No, I had asked additional questions. I got corrected on the starting salary for the... By asking questions, I get better answers. I'm not aware that figure came from $75,000. I stand corrected on that. It's $86,000 for that. And who would know better than to ask Henry at a meeting? I don't understand why that's objectionable.
All right. Anyone else have any questions on the accounts payable? Those in favor of approving the accounts payable say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
I'm opposed to it. It's too much.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the utility truck bid. You have a quote in your packet describing the need to purchase another utility truck or a new... Replace the utility truck for the utility department. Anyone care to make a motion to accept that bid?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, can you explain this bidding is... I read through the paperwork, but is this connected with the sale of vehicles last week over at the police station or is this separate from that?
I imagine this would be separate. This is a different department.
We'll do with that.
It's a different department.
This is a purchase that was a sale.
Yeah.
Or an auction.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, we have the authorization to engage in legal action regarding the Roberts Mill Stormwater Management Project. This was discussed on Wednesday night. Anyone care to make a motion to authorize that action?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. All right. We'll move into council member reports. Councilman Frazier, what do you have for us tonight?
I just would say that I'm concerned about the expenses. There's been some discussion about that here at the council. I'm the only person to vote against having a special election. I think it's appalling if you only have one ballot question, we can't put it on the bottom of the may ballot. And I think that it's... That every penny spent, that is just a foolish decision by my peers to have a special election. But I don't think I can do much about it if I don't have a majority. So that's what we're going to have to do tomorrow. But I think it's terrible that that has happened to the town. I think it's profligate wasting spending and I just think it's disgusting.
Okay. Well, everybody can do their part to keep expenses down, particularly legal expenses. You know, we need to make sure that we're prepared for our meetings before we come to the council member, the meetings and suggest things that will run up expenses across the board. So we... That's good advice, Councilman. Brad, do you have anything?
Well, I informed you all Wednesday of the... What's going on planning a zoning in terms of the medicinal cannabis grower. There's nothing new about that. Maybe I'll know something after this month's planning a zoning meeting, but I'm going to take the wind out of the police liaison sails a little bit because on Halloween, it's always nice when my youngest says, "It's not Halloween till I get my green glow necklace." Once a policeman came by and gave him his necklace, he was ready to go.
That's great.
That's something I think all the children and adults look forward to every year, seeing the police out there. And this year was nice seeing the pictures on Facebook of the police with all the trick or treaters. It's such a great thing they do for the city. I have to say, we have probably the best police department in the county, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I have a few things here. First, I guess kudos to the staff and everybody who managed to have less insurance claims and I understand that we got a considerable reduction on our insurance rates this year. And Mr. Bollinger of Barnes Bollinger Insurance told me that we were one of the best municipalities in that respect of all that he represents. And apparently he represents quite a few of them. So that's good. Second, on the 20th of October, the Silver Oak Academy had a community appreciation day and they invited me and they awarded the town this plaque. Silver Oak Academy presents this award to the city of Tonny Town and they got my name on it, but for community service. So I'd like to present this to the city to add to their collection.
That's lovely.
That's great.
Second, on the 11th of the month, I went to Mount Airy's council meeting. And the reason I went to their council meeting was because as a member of the MML Board of Directors, their initiative this year for Municipal Government Works Month, which is November, was to visit other councils and promote Maryland government works. So that's where I was on November 7th in Mount Airy at their council meeting. And on November 10th, right here in Tonny Town, we had, I guess, an award ceremony for our new ambassador program. Over 40 Tonny Town volunteer... I shouldn't say Tonny Town because a couple of them are not from Tonny Town, but over 40 people received their ambassador badges and these are volunteers that will promote the positive image of Tonny Town. It was a very nice evening. It was catered by Silver Oak Academy. Everybody... Joe, you're not wearing a badge. Joe is an ambassador. The mayor is an ambassador. I haven't had the time to go to classes, so I'm not an ambassador yet. But it was a very nice affair. They are planning their second go-round with, hopefully to get some more volunteers. In that same regard and sort of spinning off of that, Main Street, as you know, Tonny Town is a certified Main Street and we have a Main Street Board. Just this morning, we had a meeting going over how to keep that momentum going and remain a Main Street and further promote ourselves and get some things going in Tonny Town. We had a very good, involved conversation, I think, about some things we can do. And what we... What that group is planning to do is rather than come to council with a lot of grandiose ideas about why can't we do this, we want to start with some small initiatives that we can actually do while working toward the bigger things. So you're going to hear from me a lot of Main Street stuff going forward.
Awesome. Great.
Good.
That's it.
Joe, what do you have for us?
Well, as we head into the holidays, Tonny Town is going to be hosting a lot of different exciting events and things. For example, as of this weekend, the elves are on the loose in town, so you've got to go find all the elves. Across the street, Mrs. Claus's Holiday Bake Shop is going to be open and that'll be open every weekend. This coming weekend, the Red Door is going to be having an anniversary of its opening. The Tonny Town Lions Club is going to be having its pancake breakfast. And then over at 107 East Baltimore Street, there's going to be a vintage and antique holiday market that features local vendors here in town and from outside of town coming to create kind of like a large store for everybody to shop at. So there's a lot of exciting things going on and I encourage everybody to get out and, you know, participate in these things and patronize them and shop local.
Great, Joe. How about you, Carl?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all, you stole my thunder. Thank you.
I am great at that. I made sure I stared at you while I said it, too. So you do.
But that was... It was really good. I was amazed at the feedback I got from people and the fact that our police are out there and so many pictures taken that night. It is... It is great. And they are, I agree with you on this, a great group of guys and take that back to the chief tomorrow if you would. Okay. A couple of other things we lived through last week and all the polling and we've got one more day of this to go. And there's a couple of things that I have been inundated with calls all week about the characters of the... Well, yeah, characters, about how things went last week at the polls. People running up and trying to voice stuff into your face. This went on and on and on all day long, flat-out pure lying what they were telling people. We had to get judges out there to break it up a couple of times and even had to get police to get the people out of the streets. Now, tomorrow, I fear... I hope we can have a civil election. I really hope so. Of course, we've got the big signs up about the town deceiving people. This is just a wonderful thing and I've had a couple of calls about that tonight. There's no warrant for something like that. Let's try to at least keep the contention down to a low keel tomorrow, if you would. I don't know that that's going to be possible, but I would certainly like to see that happen. We're going to have a lot of people. The... We're going to have a bit of a problem tomorrow in that Mars Dubrow is going to have a large funeral visitation, I think. So we have to be cautious to keep people out of that lot. That family comes before we do. So let's try to be civil about it. Let's get it done and vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. I just had a couple of things and Brad stole Carl's thunder on the police. I kind of stole my thunder on the volunteer program. But I want to say how proud I am of our citizens for stepping up, taking time out of their schedules to learn about Tonny Town, take a test and pass that test, come to a banquet and receive their award. It's so great to know you live in a community like this. It's just a special place. I want to send that... Say that over and over again. And this morning, we were out at FLEX with a meet and greet with new members who want to be involved in the Main Street program. And we had a discussion like Diane said, that was probably as good as I remember in all the years regarding Main Street, some of the things that we could do, positive things, constructive things, things that... Whenever we would kind of veer off to the negative, we would... we would return to the positive. And I'm really excited about the...about this one piece even, this ambassador program, what that could do for the culture of our town, and I'm excited about what that'll bring. Speaking of the Red Door, I noticed the other night on my way to the Ambassador Awards that the Red Door is accepting or is handling dry cleaning, which is something we have desperately needed in this town since our cleaners closed down next to the post office many years ago. So I encourage you, rather than drive to Westminster or to Littlestown or to Frederick as I do for your dry cleaning, to try the Red Door. Something everybody uses and everybody needs, and I'm so glad that that's back in. A lot of good things going on in town. We've got some interest in the Bunk Gardner property. We've got some new neighbors moving in next to me, hopefully if we can clear a couple hurdles. And I just...I just am very, very pleased with what's going on. This next weekend is Find the Elf or something. What is it called?
Elf hunt.
Elf hunt. That's what it is. I do something like that. But that's the fifth year or sixth year for that. So that's...make sure you stop downtown this Saturday to find or to see if we can hunt for the elf. Thanksgiving's coming up. I hope everyone has a blessed and peaceful Thanksgiving. Drive safely if you're traveling. And the big news, I think, is the Christmas tree lighting, which is always my favorite event of the year. It'll be held at the police station again on December the 3rd, the first Saturday in December. So please try to make time to come down and welcome Santa, sing a few carols, and have some cocoa and candy candies. Anyone else? We're running a little early, so I'm going to step off the program and take two questions. Barry, you had your hand up.
I do not have a question, but I would like to announce that the Heritage and History Museum will be having a holiday of triseries and centrepieces at the Windsor State Bank. It will open November 28, close December 17. So I hope...
Well, thank you.
It is free, so...
Thank you for reminding me of that. And I did fail to mention that. I did an interview with Comcast last week on the community newsmakers segment that they have, and I talked about that at length. So it's on Comcast. It'll be linked in our website soon. As the production is finished, we'll link it to our website, and you'll be able to see that. But I talked about that and the ambassador program and the other things and the Christmas tree lighting.
Well, the museum will be having a float in the electric parade in Westminster, Museum of Legends, whatever it's called, on November 26th. So come and support it.
Okay. Well, you can't worry about that. All right. Barbara, do you want to make the last comment tonight?
Thank you for the time. I made a discovery today from my own information, but I discovered that the elementary school has 425 students. The middle school has 640 students. That means we have 1,065 youngsters that could use some water entertainment in the summer. So I thank you very much for considering this and looking into it at the time, and I plan to be at the meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you. All right, anyone care?
You said he could like...
I said, too, but...
But you also said he could make the last comment.
All right. Barbara, last comment.
I wrote through town this afternoon. I've seen a sign out there, "Don't be deceived by city law." I think probably that should be backwards. I think the people being deceived is the supporters of the...
Well, it's unfortunate, but politics is politics, as they say. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving and see you at the Christmas tree lighting. Corin, the elf hunt.
workshop meeting this year is the Christmas tree lighting.
Yeah, it is.
That's real...usually it's like the seventh-ish, right? A little later in the...